This meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the July 21 business meeting of 2021. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Basine?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Martin?
Here. Okay, we're gonna start off with our, at 4:00 p.m., we're having our policy review so we can catch up on our list of policies, then we will go into closed session. So, welcome, Dr. Poole. How are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you, Dr. Martin, yourself?
Good, good. Go ahead and begin.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, members of the School Board, and Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon is the start of the review from the V S B A May updates. Included within today's updates are all of the policy changes recommended by the V S B A to meet the statutory requirements concerning transgender students, except for one policy, G C L Professional Learning, that had additional changes from the V S B A sent earlier this month. G C L will be presented for vote by the September Business Meeting. A few notable changes to policies are as follows. Policy B D D, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. It includes caring for a family member with a mental condition now. The limitation is two meetings or 25% of the meetings, since we meet more than, more than enough to exceed the two on this, so 25% would be what we would follow. And if the city has declared a state of emergency, the board, and the board must meet online for continuity of operations while giving the public access to view and make comments at its meetings. Policy E G A A, which is the Reproduction and Use of Copyrighted Materials. This policy was a bit out of date, therefore, the full policy changed to keep it in line with V S B A recommendations, which then caused E G A A A, the Reproduction of Copyrighted Materials, to be repealed, since it's now included in E G A A. And G A A, Staff Time Schedules, is a new policy for Norfolk Public Schools. This was previously part of Policy G P D Z, which is Absenteeism and Tardiness, and that has now been repealed, since it's within G A A. And the regulation for G P D Z, for absenteeism and tardiness, has been renamed G A A R to support the new policy on time schedules. And the following policies are recommended for first and second reading to be voted on at September, September's Business Meeting, G A A and G C N. And finally, the other policies that were listed for a recommendation for first and second reading, they must be voted on at the August meeting, so that they're in place prior to the start of the school year. Those are the updates, the major updates. At this time, we stand ready for questions or discussions you may have on the policies.
Any questions? Mr. Jordan?
Dr. Poole, so are we, are we up to date with all the policies that would need to be in place, or should be in place as of July 1, based upon the General Assembly's actions?
The only policy that will not be up to date is gonna be G C L Professional Learning. On July 1, V S B A sent out an updated policy to that following the P R C meeting. However, that is on professional learning, to make sure it's in code, which is just a code update on that policy, as well as it's an update on making sure that we have cultural competencies as a part of our professional learning. So that will come to the board in September. That is the only one that has the regulation that must be passed by the beginning of the school year, or the code, rather, that is not on the docket at this time.
And then, as far as the policies that you're recommending for first and second reading, is today considered the first reading?
Yes, sir.
So then, the second reading would be when?
The second, the second reading would technically be for September, and voted in September. So the second reading would be during the work session of September.
So then, the policies that you have listed as for us to vote on the 18th, those that say recommend first and second reading, what's, what's the first and second reading for them?
So the, the ones that are listed on the policy cover sheet were updated prior to, prior to me having the full board calendar. So the, when those were created, the P R C was under the assumption that we may have enough meetings for first and second reading. However, the only policies that we're recommending first and second reading for now are G A A and G C N, which are both staff and human resources policies, that we wanted to make sure that there was plenty of time for the, our stakeholders to read those. The remaining policies we would recommend for vote at the August Business Meeting.
Is it, is it possible to just get an updated of the policy listing to reflect what you just shared with us?
I absolutely will. Yes, sir, after this board meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This list of policies will be on the, will be on today's agenda for vote, except for the ones that still require the second reading.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, please explain, say that again, please?
If the, we're gonna vote on the policies that do not require the second reading in September.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part.
So today, the policies that will not require a second reading in September, what month are it, August, sorry, I'm ahead of myself, in August, we'll vote on those, on adopting them.
Today?
Yes.
Oh.
Can you say which ones those are, then?
Thing but two.
The G C L.
So if it's everything but two, everything except for G A A and G C N, is that correct, Dr. Poole?
Correct, as we'd recommend a second reading on.
Are there any questions now that you have new information?
I'll, I can wait till the, to the vote. I'll need to look at it deeper.
Okay.
Is the vote gonna be on the consent agenda, or is it separate, then?
It's on the consent agenda, as, as it normally is.
Yeah. Madam Chair, my concern was, when I saw the, the listing, it didn't indicate that we were gonna be voting on any of these today. And so now that you're saying that we are gonna vote on them today, it just, I just wanna, I'll try to review them again between now and then.
Where are they? Um, there's.
They're listed under policy review right now, at the top.
August? Okay. I'm looking at, actually, I don't see it on the agenda. I thought it was.
It, it's August 18th.
Yeah, I thought that's what you said originally.
That's when we're gonna place it on the agenda.
Right.
It was on 18th and not today?
Not today.
It was on the agenda, sorry, this has gone through many versions. So yes, August 8, never mind. So we'll be voting on it, on August 18th. We'll vote on all of them together, then.
Thank you.
Sorry about that confusion, that was on my part. Okay. Anything else?
Oh, I was just gonna clarify that point, 'cause I, I got worried for a second, though, something changed.
Sorry. Yes, we've worked, worked through this a few times. Okay. Well, that was faster than planned, so, um, can I, well, do you wanna go into closed session right away? Go ahead and get that done with, okay. So can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that we enter an executive closed session.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, can you please read the motion?
I move that the members of the School Board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in a subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of today's regular personnel agenda, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is discussion of today's regular student support services agenda and consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual public litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this section of the motion are the matters set out above in subsections A and B of this motion.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Hi. Okay. We're going to executive session in the conference room. All right. Can I get a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we execute closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
Second.
Dr. Gabriel, seconded. Ms. Tanner, please, please read the resolution and call the roll.
A resolution certifying the executive meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas, the School Board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative vote, recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk, the such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. Were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We are going to recess until the 7 o'clock business meeting. All this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see so much of our public here. Just so you know, at our next business meeting, we're planning to be on the dais, so we should have some more seating available, but I appreciate you all being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Hampson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here. Okay. Up next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Normally, our student representative would lead us. Can I get a volunteer? Dr. Gabriel, would you like to volunteer? Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Birdsong, can you please begin?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Clanton, members of the School Board and our community. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share some things, some wonderful things that have occurred within the school division since the last time we met. The superintendent's video report this month will highlight our high school graduation, some of our innovative programs during the summer, and some other wonderful staff and student accomplishments. So without further ado, please roll the video.
Norfolk Public Schools' students of all ages, who were interested in art and music, had a new option available to them over summer vacation, the Summer Arts Academy. This free four-week program enabled students to choose four arts-intensive classes to focus on daily, thus exposing them to a wide variety of different art forms, including visual arts, strings, chorus, dance, and theater.
They're excited. They, you know, some of them came into us with, I, I signed up because of dance, but now I found out I love band, or I signed up because of art, and now I found out I love theater. And theater is a class that we don't normally offer in a lot of our schools, and so for a lot of students, it's their first time, and they love it.
I have piano up in 203. I have this class in the auditorium and in 210. I have strings in one class, and then I have art. Ms. Rodriguez is really cool, and she's fun, and I like the class as a whole, the people in there are cool.
Amongst the approximately 300 students attending the Summer Arts Academy, were middle and high schoolers who not only participated in the program, but also got the chance to teach and mentor younger students.
I think this has been a new experience, and it's been very unique, as compared to all my experience in middle school and just what I'm going into in high school, is that one of my, one of my teachers is also going to be in my high school program, and he's done a lot of work with me and a lot of work with the other students, and it's just been a very unique experience.
Half of them came in not knowing how to even put together a clarinet or a flute, and now they're getting out their first few notes, so I know they're gonna go far from here. I, I already had this experience with someone teaching me a new instrument, teaching me multiple new instruments, and I knew nothing, and now I get to do the same for them, so I'm so pleased that they have that opportunity.
Approximately 80 English as a Second Language learners in grades kindergarten through 9 spent part of their summer in classes at Crossroads School. This four-week program, which is for ESL students who are new to English, is heavy on academics, but also incorporates social language and school routines.
So it's really hands-on. We teach language using content, so we try to make the learning meaningful and purposeful. I hope that they have the confidence to participate and engage in the regular content classroom, because that's what they need to succeed here. So we want them to learn language, but we also want them to feel a part of the N P S system, and to be able to express themselves in the class and get stuff out of it, too.
They've missed actual being in school. They've missed the socialization, they've missed the routines of being in school, they've missed having their friends, they've missed the structure. So I think we're presenting a structure to them, especially because we have students who have never been in a classroom, and we want to create a very positive environment for our students.
Norfolk Public Schools' school nutrition department has won the Food for Thought Award in the Meal Access to Fight Hunger category. This award, which was presented by the Virginia School Boards Association, is acknowledgement of the hard work of the school nutrition staff and their commitment to our students.
The award is just for comprehensive efforts to expand meal access, to make sure that all students receive access to healthy nutritious meals, and that the programs are high-quality. It's really great to be able to highlight the efforts of the community and our staff, and all of the goal alignment that we've achieved in the last 15 months, in particular, and, you know, supporting the community during a difficult time.
Friends and family were on hand to celebrate, as over 1,600 seniors crossed the stage during Norfolk Public Schools' five high school graduation ceremonies at Chartway Arena on the campus of Old Dominion University. Despite the pandemic, this year's graduating class earned a total of over $40 million in scholarship awards. Congratulations to the class of 2021.
Booker T. Washington High School celebrated another one of their student athletes who were moving on. Landon Bertelson signed to play football at Emory and Henry College.
My coaches had good connections with the coaching staff there, and they just believed in my football ability, and we just went on from there. You know, went to camp and showed up.
Bertelson is very appreciative of this opportunity.
It means a lot to me, because previously, I thought my chances was over, and God opened up the door and told me that that's what I needed to do, so I'm blessed.
Norview's quartet of Natasha Bryant, Breonna Davis, Aria Good, and Jalen Winder-Hill placed second in the 4x100 relay at the Class 5 State Meet. Also finishing second in the boys' high jump was Jaden Williams. Another congratulations goes to Maya Byrd, who won the Class 5 State Tennis Title for a second time. She defeated Anya Amborish of Rock Ridge in straight sets.
Of course, I was excited, because I always liked doing something for the school, and I accomplished one of my goals. I wanted to get four-state championships, but getting two is close to it, so I'm very happy.
Although she didn't get as many matches as planned this past season, Byrd was able to make the most of it.
I actually enjoyed it, because it gave me time to practice on areas that I needed to improve in, so that helped me out some, even though I wasn't able to play a lot.
Getting it done in the classroom with a 3.7 GPA, this student athlete is hungry for more success.
Yes, of course, I wanna complete three-state championships. For me, like, I always wanna set goals that I can accomplish, and for Maury, I just wanna do everything possible that I can, because the staff has always looked out for me, and I just wanna give back to them.
Madam Chair Martin, that concludes my report.
Thank you. That's all wonderful. It's amazing to watch all these academic and athletic achievements of our students, and the arts, and it's just really good job, so thank you for all you're doing for our students this summer. Okay, so next, we have the School Board Clerk's report, Ms. Tanner?
Yes, Dr. Martin, for the School Board Clerk's report, we don't have anything for July, so we can move forward to the next agenda item.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so next journalist, we have Citizens Comments on Agenda Items Only. I don't have the script in front of me.
I have it. For tonight's Citizens Comments on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items, we have six speakers. We have one speaker for the Citizens Comments on Agenda Items for this section, and that is Maury Howard. And then, for tonight's public comments, speakers will have three minutes to provide public comments. A timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. So, Madam Chair, our first speaker is Maury Howard.
Okay. Please approach the podium.
I've never done this before, so I'm a little, little nervous.
Don't worry about it.
I'm here, so I'm actually speaking about Agenda Item 5.03, which is a school site consolidation plan, that's supposed to be up for a vote today. This is proposing that Madison Alternative School, that I believe is 6th grade up through high school, be consolidated with the Specialty Program School at Rosemont. I think it's a, not a good idea, to put students that age, that range up to adults, who already have shown to have behavioral issues or control, self-control issues around kids as young as 11 in these specialty schools. I realize this is supposed to be in the Annex Facility, but it's the same building, it's the same campus. If facilities such as buses, just the grounds are being shared, I don't see that it's a great alternative, and I think it should be revisited whether there's other alternative locations. This also wasn't the original site that was proposed for the consolidation plan, and this has not been brought in a public forum before. It was a different site that was recommended initially, and, and it also wasn't on the agenda until today, so people who are, who are watching streaming or remote had no opportunity for comment through email, 'cause that was due yesterday, and it wasn't posted by them. So there's a few things that I think are problematic about it. Yeah, I guess, those, I'm voicing my concerns, and as a parent of a student who went through the Young Scholars Program at Rosemont, I loved that program, and one of the reliefs was that I had a student there who thrived, wasn't stressed about going to school, whereas he was concerned about going to the middle school that we were in our home zone. And once he went there, he was comfortable. And my younger son is a lot more high anxiety, more of that type personality. He, he got into Young Scholars, was totally excited, 'cause that was the only program he wanted to apply to. And so he's going there now, and so now I have high concerns for him. And so, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So, yeah, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. And, Dr. Martin, this concludes our speakers for the Citizens Comments on Agenda Items Only.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan, did you have your hand up?
Yep. And then, he'll do a discussion. So I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel.
I have discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
On the facilities use report, I've raised several times that some time ago, the board worked and updated its policy around facility use, and it seems that, over the years, we still aren't being consistent with that policy, and so I wanted to get some explanation or understanding or update on how the policy and the regulations around facility use is being communicated and implemented out at the, at the building level. I don't recall all the changes, but I know that we, we modified the fee structure, we provided some clarity around who was considered an N P S organization and who wasn't. And at the time that we updated the policy, part of the basis for it was, one, we had received several concerns raised that the manner in which individuals or organizations were able to access the school wasn't being applied consistently or equally. And then, also in terms of the fee structure, that we would have some organizations that might be charged, you know, thousands of dollars, and another organization would be charged nothing. And so as I look at this particular report, and as I looked at the last month's report and several previous reports, it just looks on this one, for example, you know, I see where the N P S-related usage, why that would not have certain fees associated with it. This one has, you know, the use of a field, and the only thing that's paid is $25, so I really just wanna get an understanding of where we are with the school's understanding of our policy and regulations associated with facility usage, and what we can do to try to make sure that it's being applied consistently and equitably for all.
Dr. Birdsong, would you like to respond?
So, if you'll give us some time, we'll research this a little further. But as you know, the school year, our facilities were basically closed for any use, so if there's a particular incident that needs further research, we're happy to, to research that further and come back with an answer.
And, and just for, I don't, I'm not requesting any individual investigation, 'cause I think that would lead to the disparity that we had in the past. What, what I'm more concerned about is, we, we have a policy, and we have regulations, and just to try to make sure that either we are going to follow it, or a recommendation come to the board that, that we change the policy. But each time that we have these inconsistencies on these reports, it leads to, and I get phone calls, I'm sure others do, why it is that one organization has charged one thing, and another organization has charged something different. So, thank you.
Okay, so it's more of a comment?
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's more, like you said, it's more of a comment?
Well, I'm requesting that the administration come back and just update the board on its position on the, on the policy and regulations, and how it's either going to be implemented as, as the policy and regulation dictates, or come back with a recommendation for us to, to change it.
And, Madam Chair Martin, I'm not aware that we're not following the policy, so if there's an incident where we're not, I'd like to have that brought to my attention. So if it needs to be corrected, I could do so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
I have a question, bills and payroll.
Go ahead.
Not sure if it's for this one or 5.01, but during one of our last meetings, we were discussing the amount of the bonuses, and it was mentioned that we exceeded the 4.8 million, and I wanted to know by how much did we exceed that?
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Can you hear, okay? Okay. Ms. Smith, I don't have the exact number. It was, it's a little over 5 million. We, you had approved 4.8 million, and it came in a bit over, I'm thinking in the area maybe 5 and 1/2 or so. And most of the differences were in the estimates for the cost of the taxes that we were, that we were picking up. The bonuses that we provided was a flat $1,000 net check, so there was some, just some differences in the calculations we made initially, and what actually the, the bonuses costed. we made initially, and what actually the bonuses costed.
Okay.
So, there was a difference there.
So, that leads to my next question. Wouldn't we expect to see that as a part of the requests for transfers in excess of, I believe it's 50,000 or something like that?
We didn't actually have to make any budget transfers in order to accomplish that because we had had quite a few vacancies, as you're aware, and the whole coronavirus situation probably made things worse. So, we had sufficient money in the accounts to actually make those payments. So, we didn't actually make a budget transfer in order to accomplish that.
I see. Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, we have our decision and discussion agenda. First, we have the monthly financial report. Jenkins, thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Clanton, Superintendent Birdsong, and members of the board. If I'd looked a little further down the agenda, I would have stayed. Traditionally, we present a financial report for June during the month of August. The reasons for this is that many of the transactions that we process during July are actually for the previous year. So, the information would be very preliminary. And even then, a report that we do plan to provide to you next month still is not going to be the final because the reports at that point are subject to audit. The auditors find stuff. We find stuff as we're closing. So, it'll be a preliminary, but we generally provide that during the month of August. I can tell you, based on the current information that we have, we will certainly finish the year with a healthy surplus. But I can give you more information on that next month if that is agreeable.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
I don't know if it's a question, but I do have a concern. So, at the last meeting we had in June, when we were discussing bonuses and ESER funds and potential amount of carryover funds, we were told then that we would receive an update in July that would give the board a sense of where we were, not only in terms of potential carryover funds, but also where we were in terms of our expenditures with the various COVID-related funds that we have. So, I'm not sure what has occurred from June to today, but I don't think we've, the update that we got qualifies for a monthly financial report. And in the absence of having the update, then it may be one of the reasons why some of the members of the public are here on what would have been an agenda item that's now a non-agenda item. So, I'm not comfortable with the verbal report that we received. And I think we should receive the written report and update that was promised to us back in June, and not put off another month trying to get an understanding of where we are in terms of, in particular, our grant funds and the potential for carryover funds. I respect the point about closeout and audits in that piece. But we were told at the June meeting that we would have an update at the July meeting. And now, we're at the July meeting, and we don't have that update.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am.
The docket is posted on Friday. Did you reach out to Dr. Birdsong to let her know that you didn't see the materials on there? I mean, I can understand if you had requested something, but did you make anybody aware that they were not there?
So, I informed the chair. I also think it is, I think I did. It's not, I don't think it's my responsibility to try to constantly go and determine whether or not the procedures that we have are followed. All I'm asking is, is that if we're supposed to receive a monthly report, that the board receive the monthly report per our procedures, and that we have the opportunity to review that report and discuss it. So, I often will raise, with the administration or with the board leadership, whoever is appropriate, about trying to make sure that we have the items and that they are posted and available for review. And the monthly financial report that we receive is a written report. And so, that's, far as I know, that's been the practice at least as long as I've been on the board. And so, I'm just sharing with the administration and my colleagues what my concern is with us having not received what we were told. You can even look at the minutes that we just voted on, and it references that we would have this information available to us today. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
So, Mr., our chief finance officer did some research, and you went back several years, my understanding, right, Mr. Jenkins?
Uh, Dr. Birdsong, that's correct. I looked at the agendas for the previous five years, and the June report was always, has been provided during the month of August.
So, this is not a new practice.
So, Madam Chair, with that being stated, I move that we dispense with the financial report into our August meeting.
Second. We'll give Ms. Hampson the second.
Discussion?
Question about that?
So, as the maker of the motion, I'll speak first. I think that we've had enough discussion about this. I think that a historical perspective has been made to us for five years. I've been on this board for three years and have not received a financial report in the month of July. I think that our finance chief has made it very clear that we will have that information in August. If it was an oversight, that we made a promise for something in July, it was an oversight. But I think that it would be a waste of the time because I think I'm clearly understanding, I hear what you're saying. But I think we need to move on. We'll get the financial report in August, as we've done in the last five years.
Okay. My quick response to that is, whatever the procedure or historical process may have been for the last five years, the board could have been notified to that. But what is different about this year, as we often talk about, that has not been the case in previous years, is we have a pandemic, and we have received hundreds of millions of funds associated with the pandemic, which has impact on the other actions that we're taking. So, the reason why I was looking forward to the monthly financial report was that it would have provided information that ties to the other items that we have on the agenda. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, I call the question.
Oh, to call the question, sorry. Ms. Tanner, go ahead.
Basine?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, so we will receive the financial report in August. And absolutely. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have Item 5.02, the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Can you read the recommendation from the administration?
Twenty-two, oh, you can't hear me. Thank you, sorry about that. I recommend to the school board that you approve the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2026, as presented by the administration.
Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Ms. Hampson, can I get a second?
Second.
Dr. Gabriel? Okay, any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan, and then Ms. Basine.
So, first for clarity, is this what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Whatever's in there, I'm assuming that's the capital improvement.
Well, the reason why I'm asking, so there's this document, and then under the, then there's the facilities master plan that we have for cooperative strategies. But I want to make sure this is what we're voting on.
Yes, that is, it is not the cooperative strategies. It's the CIP fiscal year 22 through 26.
Okay. So, if you all could turn to Page 3 of the document, under the planned financial summary, where it identifies the plan is funded as follows, and it indicates annual allocation of 49 million, SWIFT fund of 24 million, school bus replacements of 5 million, NPS reversion account of 17.7 million. Then it references federal pandemic relief funds, ESER 2 and ESER 3. So, if I'm understanding the conversation that we had at the last board meeting, the ESER 3 funds, that's part of the funding that is currently out for survey from the public. Is that correct?
That's what we refer to as ESER 4.
So, what I don't have a grasp of then, which is why I was trying to deal with the previous financial report, is I think at the last meeting, when we were having a discussion about the relief funds, I think it was said that originally, there was one amount that I think at the last meeting, it was stated that it might be 50 million of ESER 2 and ESER 3. And I'm just not sure that in the capital improvement plan, our use of the pandemic relief funds, as it has been laid out here. And that was why I was looking for the financial report that would have provided, at least what I was hoping was going to provide, more information and details around what we have spent with those funds and what we have not spent. So, you know, I have other concerns that I've raised, but I think the, based upon the plan that we have here, it is in essence committing the school board to, and the school division, to the use of these ESER relief funds, or pandemic relief funds, of $75 million, where I don't think we have received an updated report on those funds that would be helpful for the board in its decision-making. Also think that it's because the capital improvement plan ties in with the budget cycle, the way that is identified on Page 3, that we should have a public hearing on this, and allow for public comment, as we would with the budget cycle, and rather than taking action on it without having the benefit of the public hearing, and without having the benefit of the clarification around the pandemic relief funds. Thank you.
Well, being that these, as I understand it, and Dr. Birdsong can correct me if I'm wrong, the stage, phase one was already approved in our school year 22 budget. And what this is doing is giving the city an idea of where we're moving as far as prioritizing our projects, and looking forward to, you know, school year 2026. And so, from my understanding, and again, I could be a little off, but is that this, because this will be included in each of our budgets in the next four years, that we wouldn't require a public hearing on that? Am I correct in that understanding?
That is correct. And we have shared with the board several times, on several occasions, how we plan to expend monies or funding for HVAC, from both the $113 million, from the ESER 4, some call it 3, but it's 4, and from the CRSA funds. So, we've shared that amount with you. We were very transparent with our plans. Mr. Fraley explained to you how we were going to utilize the funding to support specifically HVAC with the CIP plan. So, we have provided that information to you. And additionally, as you know, you also get quarterly updates on grant funding.
Any other question? Ms. Basine, I think you're up next.
Yes. Mr. Jordan alluded to some points I wanted to make, and some I've shared with you via email, as well as in previous, on numerous occasions in previous meetings as well. I, too, want to see where we are. The survey that we did put out does say that these are ESER 3 funds. And I believe the public input is critically important. We have said that. We have also reiterated our commitment to ensuring that we are getting that stakeholder input in our decision-making. And I believe we are in progress in that direction, but we are not there yet. As well, I don't believe that we are really taking into consideration our socioeconomic diversity and program planning goals. And that's something that I think needs to be incorporated in this. I do wholeheartedly believe, though, that we do need to focus on HVAC because we are very much still in this pandemic, and that is critically an important piece to prevention. I have still a lot of questions around that, but I'm hoping that we, taking a vote on that tonight, it feels premature to me. And I've said that before. So, I just, I'm restating that position.
Okay, let me respond to that again. This will be vetted through our normal budget process, which includes public hearings moving forward over the next four years. So, there will probably likely be changes to this over the next four years. This is putting together a five-year priority plan based on what we know today to allow, to give a heads-up to our city that funds many of these projects, and also to allow the school district to plan moving forward as well. So, this will include public comment. This will be fully vetted, as our entire budget is every year.
Can I respond to that? I understand that. I understand that process, having been on the board for six years. But there are projects already slated for this coming year, which does include, which would hinder the public's opportunity to provide input on it. Because there are projects already assigned in the plan, if you read through it, for this upcoming year. So, that is, you know, I think we do need to take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Clanton.
Ms. Smith, I think Ms. Christine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I have a question about the NPS reversion account. And we're showing like 17.7 million here. So, are we saying, like, over a four-year period, we are planning to allocate 17.7 million from that specific account? So, let's say in year two, well, let's say we only get 4.4 million a year. That's what this averages out to. So, that means the entire amount is going to go to the capital improvement, correct? In theory?
Mrs. Smith, all of it would go into capital improvement, and it's all in the first year. The projects are all scheduled for year one. Now, that is a multi-year fund. So, I would suspect that not all of the work will be done in the first year, and all the payments may not be made during the first year. But it would be on projects that were identified to start in the first year.
But depending on the amount that we have, we could pretty, we could, there's an opportunity that it could all go to CIP and not other projects, such as educational planning or something.
The 17.7 is the money that was approved from prior Um, the seventeen point seven is the money that was approved from prior surpluses, so it's.
Okay.
The amount that we have left in the twenty budget is not a part of this.
A part of this, okay.
Has not been included. The city's policy is that they will make that money available to you for one-time purposes, but it does not say that it's exclusively capital.
Okay.
Capital is a big component of that, but it's not the entire thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I think that we've seen a lot on capital improvement, we, last month, we voted for the first year, which is already included in this five-year. I appreciate the work of the administration in giving something that can be shared with the public, as to a clear direction as to where we're going. You listened to one of the top priorities that come out of the community, it's about our facilities and making sure that we have safe, secure learning environments for our students. Now, on the surface, I could probably agree with my colleagues regarding, you know, maybe there's some concern or whatever else, but when we look down and really dig down, when we really dig into this, we're giving a plan, this is not the budget. The budget is by, what we have to do every year, we have to do public hearings around the budget, this is setting up a plan and a framework, so that we can work and operate and be able, so the city council knows exactly what we are going to be looking for. I think we just answered the question as regarding the reversion funds, that it's all going to capital improvement. There's another piece that we're not even talking about here today, which is about new schools. And some of these schools that are listed in here, we went ahead and put them in here so that we made sure that we took care of them just in case, but some of those schools may be new school construction, and those dollars would then be released from the capital improvement plan and be able to use, be used elsewhere. I think that we have a plan, it's the first time, and yeah, I understand that some of my colleagues have been here six years, almost twelve years, but now we've got a plan, and I think that it's, it's good for us to move forward, so that our administration knows facilities, where we're going. It sends a strong message back to our building-level leaders, our teachers in the building, that this, this school board and the administration are serious about making sure that we have safe learning environments, safe working environments, that are clean and safe and healthy for all of our individuals who come into those buildings each and every day. And so for that, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues, I will be voting in support of this, as I know that there will be changes that will come as we continue to move forward, but we are putting out a blueprint, a plan of action, and I think that that sends a strong message to all of those who are involved and to our community. Thank you.
Then, Mr. Jordan, I saw you had your hand up, did you still?
Yeah, so I, I have no issue whatsoever with us having a five-year capital improvement plan, I've long supported that, and will continue to support that. However, what we, what we have in here as part of the plan summary, is the board approving a budget allocation, as it is associated with the federal pandemic relief funds. On the, the survey email that went out to the public asking for their input, it says that your input will directly impact how SRR three funds are spent across the schools and the division. It says on the planned financial summary, federal pandemic relief funds, SRR two and SRR three, and I respect what Dr. Birdsong has clarified with us as far as SRR four. The value of the public hearing, as it associates with the budget, or even with the capital improvement plan, is that it gives the board the opportunity to hear from the public what they think, actions that the board should take, and we could get a hundred people that come and say, move full speed ahead. But what we've, what we're doing here is, we have a, on the board agenda, as it was posted, well, I can't tell because it's changed, but at least as it is posted right now as I'm looking at it, it doesn't show vote required for five point zero two. It does include, it's more than just recommendations, I support the idea of letting the public, the council, and everybody know what we're going to be doing in terms of improvements, but what it has in here is action on a, on a budgetary matter in addition to the, in addition to the projects. So we, we didn't get the resolution or recommendation in writing until, I think maybe about eleven thirty today. We haven't done the public hearing, as is, as I believe is, is required, and if not required, is recommended as part of our work that we do as a school board, and we are allocating seventy-five million dollars of pandemic relief funds, when we have not received the last quarter update on the pandemic relief funds, to even know exactly what that means in terms of how the school division, the school board, is going to use its pandemic relief funds beyond what is identified in this, in this document. So I support the safe and secure schools, I support providing a plan, we've had five-year plans before. What I'm objecting to in particular, without going into specifics within the plan, is the lack of notice, the lack of a public hearing, and I think that we should err on the side of doing things in accordance with our policy and our procedures and the law, and not just rush this through. So, thank you.
Dr. Martin.
Martin, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted, for clarity, Dr. Poehl, because you gave the presentation last, and I asked about the educational planning, I asked about the funding, as far as the tutors and so forth, and whether or not we had the additional funds that were already in there, and that was for three years, correct? That was the last, the last grant, and that was secured for three years, correct?
Correct.
All right, and that was to focus on pandemic things that we've had, and I asked that specifically in the last work session, because it was presented to us and given to us an action on the final page of that presentation, that this will be coming up today. It also stated, the recommendation would be coming from the administration for us to approve the five-year capital improvement plan. That was on the final pages of recommendation at the work session, so this is not new, this was given to us as a board, and to be perfectly honest, we, I've consistently said about taking action, that we have to be aboard about action. I'm totally about protocol and doing things within the rules, but this has been given to us. And honestly, this, what I consider here, we need to wait, we need to wait, no, our constituents need for us to take action. Again, this is a blueprint, it is not, yes, it is saying that these are the numbers that we want to look at every year to prepare and build a budget. We just got out of governance training, talking about not getting in the weeds, giving the administration and the professional staff that we have to do the job that they're hired to do, and they're giving us a recommendation, I encourage my colleagues to, to vote on the recommendation, and if there are things that need to be changed when the budget process comes around, we can do that. But at this particular point, I'm voting in favor of action on approving a five-year capital plan, and I encourage everyone else to do so. And with that in matter, Chair, I call the questions.
Tanner, please call.
Fessin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
No.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, up next we have the school site consolidation plan concerning Madison and Easton.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Clen.
I'd like to move in light of always erring on the, the side of caution and to ensure in transparency, both with the items considered with Madison and Easton, I'd like to move that pursuant to Virginia Code two-two-point-one-dash-seven-nine, section eight, that we authorize the superintendent to conduct a public hearing within the next ten days, to, on the purposes of discussion of consolidation and removal, and program removal regarding Madison School and Eastern Preschool, and that we postpone that item for consideration until our August eighteenth meeting.
Okay, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that.
Yes.
Instead of within ten days, that does it within the timeframe.
Within, up to ten days.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's.
Just to be clear on the timeframe, the ten-day requirement is for the advertisement of the notice.
Okay.
In the newspaper.
All right. So I'll take the friendly amendment, that within ten days, we have the advertisement of the.
The advertisement needs to be published in the newspaper for at least ten days prior to the hearing on the question and the vote of the board.
Eventually just follow the regulation.
I will work with the superintendent to draft the notice quickly, so we can get it in the paper right away, well before the August board meeting where the hearing will occur. And then the hearing can occur at the same board meeting, it just needs to occur prior to calling the vote.
Got it.
Can I get a second?
Oh. Uh, was that, that was, that was a motion that you had just.
I made a motion.
Yeah.
And I accepted the friendly amendment.
I will second.
Dr. Gabriel, any discussion? Um, Ms. Fessin and then Mr. Jordan.
So, so, when, when will the public hearing take place?
Dr. Birdsong's going to decide on that and let us know. It won't take place within the next ten days, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Jordan and then Dr. Gabriel.
Can you all just provide a little, little more clarity? So the, uh, the code of Virginia that Mr. Clanton cited, was the same concern that I had about not just this one, but the previous one, and so Dr. Martin, when I had emailed you about my concern, trying to make sure that we did do a public hearing, so prior to the meeting, I, I was speaking to Attorney Cloud, and he said that he also had, on his own, provided some feedback, I guess, to, to the board leadership and the superintendent about the public hearing, so can you just kind of, I'm not, I wasn't quite following the motion and the friendly amendment, but can you just share with the board as a whole what the guidance that you all were given regarding the, the code that is, that was just, that was just cited, so that we can all just be on the same page?
Well, as I make her the motion, Mr. Jordan, again, having read, having seen this here, I felt that we needed to ensure that we had the most, we didn't want to do anything that could later on have questions. Yes, you brought up questions, I mean, it's not new, you bring up a lot of questions, but you brought up questions regarding this one, on this particular item here, and I just feel like in the best interest, there's no major rush on this, yes, we would like to potentially have moved the Madison program offline, as far as in its current location to move it, but if there's concerns, this is why we have the opportunity to postpone, we have the opportunity to make this motion, and so I felt that it was a great opportunity to go ahead and just do this, to give cover all bases, that there was no major rush at this particular point, and so that there was no question that came back later on about whether or not we followed the proper protoc, protocol, let's follow the code, let's go ahead and have a public hearing, let's have community input, and then let's be able to bring that back. So this is why I'm making that motion, and not for it to take action on it tonight, but to include public comment on these particular items here, because they may, because of the nature, even though they are regarding centers and not physical buildings, there are still questions regarding whether or not that meets within the criteria, and so therefore, we're moving forward to, I'm making the motion to move forward to have the public hearing, and allow the superintendent and their administration to come out with the date and time for that.
So, thank you for bringing that up. So, Mr. Jordan, just to give you a little insight, some insight, I don't know if it's what you're asking for, but there has been a lot of back and forth about, and there is a sense of urgency, there's a sense of urgency around Madison in particular, not necessarily Easton, and that the administration would like to get them in, in a more suitable facility, and they, she would like to get them in this year, and the concern is the timeline with the school year quickly approaching, of being able to accomplish that if, if there isn't a decision made today. You know, Easton, we discussed, we've been discussing, we decided actually to, to consult, move the Easton pre-K program to Fairlan as part of the Lake Taylor School realignment back when we took Poplar Hall offline. So these are discussions that we've been having for a few years now.
Yeah, but the last.
Did have public hearings about them, included with the LTS, uh, school, and, but we realize that has been a while, and even though these are programs, not schools, even though these do not, this, these movements do not impact any type of, because they're citywide, citywide programs, they don't impact any zoning, we still, you know, so technically, the case can be made that we do not, that they do not require a public hearing, but we want to make sure that we do, we do value public opinion, and we want to make sure that we get, go through this process and allow community input, just as we have with cooperative strategies, whenever they were, earlier this year, they had several community input forums, and they, you know, delivered the, the feedback that they received to us early, you know, what, last month. So, you know, we're just going to continue in the same respect to our community that we hear from them, even when we don't have to, we are hearing from them because we want to.
Thank you, I guess I was just trying to, really just speak to, trying to make sure that we can just all be on the same page, because I understand Madison being a program, but we're also talking about closing the facility, correct?
Yes.
And with Easton, that also has a program, but we're also talking about closing the facility, correct?
Yes.
So that, so I just, I couldn't quite follow, because I just think it's important that if you all, if we can just share with the board as a whole, you know, what is being described is just helpful to us.
Right, well, I mean, in fact, these aren't new conversations.
I'm supportive of the, of doing the public hearing and the motion that was placed on the table, I just want to make sure that we are, we're, we're consistent, because I've, you know, when Dream Keepers was looked at for closure, when CSEP was moved from, was one time at Tucker and Ballantyne, and then moved to Oakwood, then it was moved from Oakwood to now Richard Bowling, I mean, we've had, we've had public hearings, even in our planning, we've had community meetings out in those areas, and so I just encourage us to be as engaging and include the public, even as one of the public speakers spoke earlier today, you know, just trying to make sure that people understand what it is that, that we are doing, and that we have the benefit of that, of that feedback, so, thank you.
Exactly. Okay, so we have a motion, and did you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah. Dr. Birdsong, if we allow for the public hearing to take place, and then we vote on it on August the eighteenth at our business meeting, what does that look like for the school year with regards to the students at Madison and the students at Fairlan? That's my first question.
So quite honestly, as you know, we're in the middle of the summer right now, we have a couple more weeks of summer school, and if we, if the governance, governance team is moving in the direction of moving our children out of the Madison building, I believe that knowing that in August will not give us the adequate time to prepare any location to properly receive our children. We would definitely need more time than that, so if, if that is the decision of the board, I would recommend us not moving our children as desperately as we want to out of Madison for next year. I also have to be respectful of all the other projects going on, and preparing a potential location to receive our children, and I just don't think that would provide adequate time.
My next question is from Mr. Cloud. Mr. Cloud, is this board legally obligated to hold a public hearing for the two items that we are about to, well, were proposed to vote on with regards to the school consolidation?
I believe it is under that statute. I can't be absolutely certain, there are some arguments that can be made, however, if you vote for it and do it, the judge will decide that you violated the statute that Mr. Cloud is referring to, and dictate all your decisions, requiring you then, if you do wish to take action, to hold a public hearing. Whether or not a person is agreeing with the law, it will prevail. Hard to say, that's a technical statute, there are some arguments that these are programs and not schools, however, whether or not a judge would consider the fact that for some purposes, these are not considered schools, is relevant with regard to the statute that was mentioned, which requires for consolidating schools or making significant changes, people assignments. for consolidating schools or making significant changes, people assignments, and why are such a notice in a hearing, I, I cannot say. I think the safest thing to do is to hold a public hearing pursuant to that statute first and then.
I support measuring twice and cutting once. This is unfortunate for our children in these buildings. Both of these buildings have, uh, conditions which are, are, they're difficult to be in. And here we are, um, postponing something legally. I would never want to put this board in a situation where we would be in, uh, conflict with the law. Uh, and we do value public input. We have discussed this numerous, numerous times. We had a survey that went out, uh, from cooperative strategies. We've had several public forums prior to the pandemic. And so, I will support the motion, but I have a lot of, um, concern about the fact that we are still holding children in these buildings when there are better opportunities for them. And so, Dr. Birdsong, if your administration is able to, um, work on many things as you already do, if the possibilities of moving these children during the school year, uh, presents an opportunity, please feel free to present those opportunities to the board. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Kamson.
I'll just say a few, I'm just going to move it down a little bit, uh, just to, because of my asthmus. Uh, I'd just like to agree with Dr. Gabriel. Uh, you know, I spent my life in Norfolk Public Schools and I've spent my time, lots and lots of time, in our old, many of our old disintegrating schools. And it's time for us, it's time for Norfolk Public Schools, and we are certainly trying to do so, to step forward and make sure that we provide 21st century schools for our children. And that's going to take step by step, but if we keep talking about it and talking about it, it never will happen. It never will happen and we have children at schools that are 70 years old and poorly maintained. And it's time to turn that around and this was a step to do it. Both these were steps to do it. And so, perhaps we could all keep our focus on the children and putting them in safe, secure buildings. And that's why there was so much focus on HVAC. I think we've all learned about HVAC in the last year and a half. So, if we could kind of keep that in mind as we move forward, that every day we delay, every day we postpone, that's another day that children are in schools that are not the schools that they deserve. They need to be in 21st century schools and we need to move forward on it as quickly and as legally as we can. So, I support what Dr. Gabriel was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kamson. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Um, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin?
Aye.
Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, up next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner, who do we have first to the lectern?
Madam Chair, we have five speakers for citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Sam Bray, followed by Kevin Wilkins, Sr.
Thank you. Um, please approach the lectern, that's what I was going to say. Go ahead.
Got to walk around.
Did you include that we don't make comment? Is that still on there? I don't know that hurt. Okay. But go ahead and approach the lectern, sir. You can begin.
Good afternoon, um, Madam Chair, Mr. Clanton, which is gone, Dr. Birdsong and board members also, everyone here. So, my name is Sam Bray, I'm a locksmith shop supervisor for Norfolk Public Schools. I've been with Norfolk Public Schools for 31 years, going on 32. So, my job as locksmith shop supervisor is to provide safe buildings, locks, doors, hardware. So, to speak about the pandemic, one of the things that my shop was asked to do was provide y'all with COVID shields. What does COVID shields have to do with doors and hardware? It has to do with the simple fact that we all, at Norfolk Public Schools Maintenance, as well as child nutrition, school plant, any of us that were here, had to do things outside of our realm of work. We had to because we have to keep Norfolk Public Schools safe for ourselves. So, I say that to say this is, you know, we come back to a pandemic of something you can't see, can't smell, can't touch, you don't know where it is. That's scary. I was exposed to COVID three times during my time with Norfolk Public Schools. When I came back on April the 17th, or April the 13th, excuse me, my shop completed 439 work orders during the beginning of COVID. That's in and out of schools, every school, as well as having to go to vendors, which caused exposure. To bring to your attention, the materials that you have right here, the warehouse that I went to, their entire warehouse was shut down due to COVID. One of the salesmen helped me load the material because they didn't have any warehouse workers. So, we were in it every day. It's scary. To be exposed to COVID, that's even scarier. To know that you took it home to your wife. I spent Thanksgiving in Pennsylvania. Hmm. I couldn't spend it with my family because I was exposed to COVID. So, I couldn't be around anybody. So, me and my wife, we left, just to go away. Not good. It's scary to know that we were put in those situations. We weren't thought of with the bonuses. That's unfair to us. You know, we're part of a system, Norfolk Public School system. So, you know, I've been on an interview for Norfolk Public Schools and this is one of the things that's asked. What does this mean to you? Well, I'm the center gear. That's maintenance. What happens to the other two? They can't move. We're part of this. We do our jobs every day. We come to work and we provide safe places for these kids. You talk about HVAC, that's us. Doors and hardware, that's us. Windows, everything, that's us. That's what we do every day. And we try to do the best that we can for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next?
Mr. Wilkins?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, good evening, everybody. Can I say what? Somebody say something? Okay. History is the province of, both of art and science, of the contemplative and the concrete. To know it, to understand it, to relate to it, we need imagination and imagination that does not create a new world, but rather recreates a new one. With that in mind, I think it is most appropriate to reset our focus back to March of 2020, as I think our continued reemergence from the COVID pandemic has dampened the memories of the pervasive danger, excuse me, and the fear that COVID created. When an order was given to shut the district down, the threat faced by COVID was palpable and urgent. It is in the face of this difficult reality, where our professional duties, where every handshake, spoken word, or even something as insignificant as shaving a pin could carry a death sentence. Still, facilities maintenance performed bravely and admirably to live up to the district's mission to be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. I am a US Marine veteran who proudly and honorably served, excuse me, knowing that I may have to take, excuse me, face death as part of my duties or be the arbiter of someone else's life. None of us, as NPS employees, signed our contracts with dying or killing each other as a possibility. Yet, this is the responsibility that was thrust upon us. We had to leave our homes and be present in NPS spaces without the safety of Zoom. Our health, lives, and the lives and of our coworkers and families are still on the line and residing in the boundary created between the compliance of others and chance. I've heard you all describe our work as business as usual, but for you all to view our work through a historical lens that lacks compassion and nuance allows you all to create, equate our value and presence in the larger NPS family as a subgroup of employees, a descriptor best suited for an accounting spreadsheet, not a way to publicly explain how you qualify overlooking 500 full-time employees who are still waiting for the leadership of the district and the board that oversees it to recognize the significant, significant sacrifice and courage that it takes to maintain the hundreds of acres of land, the hundreds of thousands of square feet of buildings, and the hundreds of millions of dollars of NPS assets with the hopes that our educators and students will return safely sooner rather than later. It is evident, when you all are forced to put names and faces with the people you initially bypassed as a subgroup and apply humanity to the process, the outcome is easy as proven by the group of employees who spoke at the last meeting. Yet, our contribution, our above and beyond contribution still remains unappreciated. Excuse me. Your responsibility to us is fiduciary, meaning you act on behalf of all of us, putting our interests ahead of any personal animus with the duty to preserve good faith and trust. I urge you to stop sullied into tremendous culture and morale that each employee has created and nurtured by spending their enormous professional talents and personal capital. That culture is what spurred us to be accountable and counted on. I urge you to finally make the right decision to honor all our contributions and finish paying the bonus to each member of the NPS family. That is not an act of magnanimity on your part. We have already earned this bonus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Angela, and please forgive me for, is Angela here tonight? Okay. Followed by Beverly Gwynn.
Good evening, Ms. Kulp.
Good evening. My name is Angela Kemp and I am a over 20-year employee of Norfolk Public School, have proudly served with some of you guys that's here now. Nice to see you again. Um, I come here because, too, the bonus, you know? And I'm speaking on how I feel let down or maybe I feel like I'm unworthy, you know, because, um, as a bus driver, we all know that I'm the first and the last to see the kids, right? When COVID came, initially, y'all shut it down. Then we had to come back in, we had to drive the buses to keep the buses operable. We had to sanitize the whole fleet. And we have other drivers and people that's going to speak on that. But as far as my time and service to, and dedication to the kids, that kind of really hit me in my heart to be left out of that bonus because I drive over 44 kids now and Delta virus is coming back. I'm going nowhere because I'm committed and dedicated to those kids. But how can I, how can I, uh, uh, respect the job that don't respect my life and that the mere, the only thing you guys could have offered us was $1,000? But to leave us out of that little portion of money, it was a slap in the face to me. But I ain't going nowhere because I love the kids. I do it for them. But I'm just telling you, that was a slap in the face. When it's a bomb threat, the drivers are there. When it's a storm, the bus drivers are there. The teachers are gone, but I, I, I love y'all. But I'm just telling y'all, when a storm comes to Norfolk, the first thing y'all hear, why don't drivers drive through that storm? Because we have to get your kids home. You can't get there. Now, my kids, I don't even know how they got home. I'm trusting that they bus drivers did the same thing for them that I'm doing for my bus kids. So, I just want y'all to know the importance of being a Norfolk Public School bus driver. Please stop leaving us out. We've been fighting a long time to be able to sit at the table with everybody else. When y'all have, uh, the oratorian things, we got to pay. Can we get a section? We tired of begging because we put in work and we want to be recognized. Love y'all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Beverly Gwynn.
Good evening, uh, school board and, um, Dr. Birdsong, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Beverly Gwynn. I'm a bus driver, uh, for Norfolk Public Schools. In the last school board meeting, June 22nd, regarding the one-time bonuses, Dr. Birdsong said, quote, "We want to, wanted to ensure that the employees that went above and that had to go outside of their job descriptions, learn new skills. They were at a higher risk than the average employee of helping us manage through this pandemic," end quote. I would like to state that transportation employees were the first ones to have contact with the children. Although six feet apart was recommended, we all know that can't happen. We couldn't even do three feet distance between everyone. Every student on the bus that got on the bus was within three feet of the driver, every single student. And the assistants were less than one foot as they had to seatbelt or secure safety vests on most of their elementary school children. So, yes, all of our bus drivers and bus attendant assistants were at a higher risk than the average employee in helping Norfolk Public Schools manage through this pandemic. Dr. Birdsong also talked about being, quote, "Very deliberate in identifying who those employees were. Certainly, our classroom teachers on the front line, our school nutrition staff on the front line, our custodians on the front lines," end quote. My question is, what about transportation? We were on the front lines also. There was no six feet apart, there was no three feet apart, although we did try our best. If a parent sent a sick child to school on the bus, we could not say no to the parent. We had to transport the child to the school, risking our health, and then the nurse would decide whether the parent, to have the parent come pick up the child. If a child refused to wear a mask, we still had to transport the child. Your transportation team right now is feeling very unappreciated and very discouraged. We already are underpaid and extremely short-staffed and now we are excluded from the one-time bonus. We were frontline also. I'm asking you to consider us for inclusion in the one-time bonus. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn.
Dr. Martin, our last speaker is Louis Williams.
Good evening, board. Dr. Birdsong, I am a bus attendant. I firsthand take care of the kids that special needs and we are first line. We see them in the mornings, we see them when they go home. We take care of them en route and going home, taking care of them, making sure that they have their masks on. As a bus attendant, my job is to secure them, help our children safe. I hear of all of you, great people, saying, "Our children." Our children. And that's one of Ms. Birdsong's things. She loves our children. So, we support our children by being dedicated employees for transportation. And me, myself, I've been through about to die in the military and stuff like that. But I'm saying for the people that I work with, my colleagues, my, uh, buddies, everything, we do our job faithfully all the time. We take everything on the chin, but we stand up and keep fighting. For us to not have, uh, even consideration of being, uh, getting the $1,000 bonus, that one-time bonus, I couldn't believe it. I can't believe it. And that's really not right, in my opinion. You have to make the decisions. Think about it. Your children, our children, first get on the bus, they get to school safely. And it's stressful. The kids do not be like that. The kids do not be like they saints. We have to adjust and react. We have to maintain the safety level. We have to do these things. And all we asking is to be recognized as part of all of this. Transportation, nutrition, it's all got to come together. But for one set to get and the other set don't, I don't think that's good. And I hope we can address this in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Dr. Martin, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, everyone. Next up, we have matters of the board and specifically board committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report? To present? Have any committees been meeting?
Policy meets tomorrow.
Yeah, policy committee, but we, we handle that through the business process, so.
What's that?
We handle that through the business process. We addressed policy earlier today, unless you have anything to add?
No.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
So noncommittee matter, when are we going to revisit the bonuses?
We've requested a report, and so Dr. Birdsong's administration is putting that together.
And what, can we get an overview of what we can expect from that report?
Well, I believe what was asked was to, was the classification, job, the job classifications and which received the bonuses that we approved last month and which did not. Was there anything in addition?
Sure.
Okay.
So what would it look like for the remaining employees to receive a bonus?
That, well, that's, we need to identify who those remaining employees are, and then...
So what I'm asking is, as a part of that same briefing, that we have that information as well, that it's not, we know who did and who didn't, and then...
So I mean, I was, I, I would expect that, and I think this was communicated, but just for clarification, that we would know how many people, I mean, it is for the intent to evaluate whether we're gonna give more bonuses or not, so with that would come numbers of employees and also dollar amounts attached to the recommendations.
Just want to make sure it's clear to everyone who's here.
Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, that was one of my questions as well, is when, when we might expect to receive an update on the bonuses and when we might take action on it. Additionally, I wanted to know when, if you have any updates about, from the Council of Great City Schools, about next steps and, and the timeline and when we might approve that timeline?
Yeah, we'll have that at our August meeting. We'll be able to approve that timeline. We were waiting on some information to, on, specifically, we were waiting to understand when the deadline to receive, that the administration will be prepared to present the interim goals and guardrails based on the changes that we made at our governance training. And so we, I did receive that, and so Cindy is putting that into the timeline, the overall timeline, and I don't know if they, if that, the date that we gave them means that they have to now rearrange anything. I haven't gotten response from that back yet, and all of this just happened yesterday. So I didn't get an email today, but of course, you all will get that as soon as I receive it.
So you're thinking business meeting?
Yes, so August, I believe, we're having a hybrid meeting on the 18th.
You did?
We will be.
Okay.
And we are getting together tomorrow with Ms. Tanner to go over the calendar for the remainder of the year. I know that was something that we were going to tackle through our governance training, and then we didn't, but I want us to continue to have something instead of nothing, so until we come to whatever new format of calendar we decide on through that process.
Okay. I specifically asked about that at the governance training, and the first and third Wednesday, keeping our schedule as is, was what was shared with all of us, unless, I mean, it's that, what, what your recollection?
Well, normally, I went back and looked at what we did in 2019 in August, and we normally don't have a, because the, the way the first and the third lands, we don't normally have a school board meeting the first week of school. And so we would have to change it, we could either do back-to-back meetings or have a hybrid meeting on the third week, and so that's what we've talked about doing, that's what I thought we'd do as we did before, so.
Right, and respectfully, we've done that the last two years and last year due to COVID, for whatever reason, that was determined. But unlike other governing bodies, I think it's critically important for the school board to meet because we, we have yet, you know, it was my hope that we would receive our, you know, reopening update for the next school year, you know? Some of the reports that were requested at the last, at our retreat about, you know, the, the quarter four academic performance of our students, I mean, there's, there's a lot of information that I think the board, information and monitoring reports that the board is still responsible for reviewing prior to the start of the school year, that it concerns me to have a hybrid meeting. And I would personally like to think that all of our input would be taken as we develop the board calendar together, which is why it's had previously always been part of the organizational meeting, which I hope we can get back to where all of our input is valued along those lines. So I strongly encourage us to keep with what was discussed at the governance training of having the meeting on the first and third Wednesday.
So that would mean...
Because I, we talked a lot about schedules, oh, let me finish. We talked a lot about people's schedules, and I have planned my schedule and my life around our meetings per my responsibility. And so I hope that it will be honored, like we do for others.
You're suggesting that we have a meeting on, so we'll go, the kids will go back to school on Wednesday, so you think we should have a meeting that Wednesday evening?
I'm talking about August right now.
I'm sorry, okay.
But we can, September 2nd, is it? Isn't that the first?
You know what? I've been doing this all day. I feel like we're already in August, I think, so I apologize for that, and I did that earlier, too. I feel like we're already in August.
September 1st, I mean.
Yeah, I'm talking about August.
I guess the question, are we having a meeting August 4th? Are we having a work session on August 4th and a business meeting on August 18th?
I'd talked about, that's why I looked back in August and of the previous years, and they, and it was a hybrid meeting, and so we were talking about having a hybrid meeting again, so that would be on the 18th. And then...
Manager of May.
I'm gonna have to look at my notes on those moving forward.
A hybrid meeting is not gonna deter us from getting the necessary reports that we need. I think that what we've done in the past years is to be mindful in the respect that our administration is to be focused on opening schools as well as doing the same thing and handing information to us. Hybrid meeting is just, rather than having a separate work session, that we have this all at one time. In respect to the meetings on the first and the third, we've already begun to start looking at the calendar. We're gonna have a conflict in September, we're gonna have a conflict in October, and we're gonna have a conflict in November on the third Wednesday. We have the SBA in October, Council of Great City Schools in November, and then we have the, the first day of school, which we've already said that, which has been a tradition of this board, not to do anything on that first week.
That has been a tradition, right?
So we're looking at that, and, and Dr. Martin, myself are gonna start looking at calendar, definitely taking in consideration, we're trying to get it done early, so we have something to present so that we can get feedback.
Isn't the first day of school on the 8th?
So September, we're looking at having the meeting, the 15th and the 20 seconds, that would be back-to-back, to try to, at least try to stay to the first and third Wednesdays.
So in September, the first Wednesday is on the first. Who starts on the 8th?
Yeah, so in the past, though, we wouldn't, we'd reserve that time for school visits and getting, preparing for the beginning of the year. I'm just going off of tradition, this is what's been done in the past, and I, again, I'm trying to get a calendar together so I can propose it to you all for comments. We just haven't met yet, we're literally meeting tomorrow about it. So I've been very, you know, I, I share your frustrations about planning, and...
So Dr. Martin, board members, if we have a meeting on the first of September, it would not prevent board meetings from going to the first day of school on the 8th?
First week.
Okay, but what I'm, what I was saying is, just as in the past, that they, we wouldn't have, the, the administration is still very busy that week, and so I was trying to respect that. But again, it's, now we're just kind of speculating at this point because we haven't actually sat down and had the conversation yet, which is why I would like to be more prepared for you all to actually have something in front of you and we go over together.
Dr. Martin, why don't you, why don't you do that tomorrow like you're planning, and then you could send it to us Friday, Monday, and that way, that's, then we, you could get some immediate feedback for that, rather than going in rounded circles tonight. If you're already meeting tomorrow, that way you'd be able to send us your draft and we could, and give us a tight dead time, deadline to get it back in a day or two. It doesn't take forever to read that, and that would be helpful, maybe.
Right.
So, you know, even as, as I say, yes, those are some things that we did in September, I'd like to get away from what has been tradition and really focus on what the needs are. So what is, what is the needs of this board in terms of our role and responsibility, and what is, what are the needs of the administration? What do they need from us to be fully prepared for the next school year? And that is, that should be driving our board calendar. And so as you look at that tomorrow, I hope that that is what's considered, because for August, and I'm talking about August, you know, I, there were times we had to do the hybrid during the pandemic, which I get, but I'm uncomfortable getting information on a particular day and then having to potentially vote on that information. I like to have time where we receive the information and have two weeks before a vote is taken, and I would like for that process to, to continue as best as possible.
I agree with you. It's just not always possible, but it's whenever possible.
But for August, I think, I, I don't understand why it isn't, just because...
I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just saying what has preliminarily been discussed to try to stay, we, we just, literally, Carlos and I had a very brief discussion about, is the first and Wednes, first and third Wednesday, is that really working out? And how does that look in the fall? And then we said, well, is it or not? It is, it's kind of half and half for the first few months, and to try to build consistency into it, you know, around holidays and, you know, school starting and so forth, we just kind of came up with something to start with, but we literally have not even met with Ms. Tanner or Dr. Birdsong to even discuss it yet. And so these are just, again, very much speculation. So I appreciate your input, but please don't attack me because this isn't set in stone yet. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm surprised that you take anyone's inquiry as an attack.
Okay. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yes, I would be in favor of the August 4th work session and the August 18th business meeting for the, and I think when we were just having the conversation about the pandemic bonuses, that we can get the report on the pandemic bonus, whether we have a meeting on the August 4th or not, that we receive that report by the 4th, so that on the 18th, I would like to bring forward, I'm gonna be requesting that we have on the agenda on the 18th, action associated with the pandemic bonus. So even if you all decide not for us to meet on the 4th, I think if we can have that information by the 4th, it would still give the board time to review it and ask any questions so that we could be prepared for the 18th, if that's indeed accepted as something to be on the, on the agenda. I would like some clarity regarding the, the ESER 3 and ESER 4.
Okay, before we go there, Dr. Birdsong, do you think you could have that to us by the 4th? Okay. Question to getting that report, we have requested it before. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, and, and, and this doesn't have to be answered, it can be an email, but I'm confused about the ESER 3 and ESER 4 now. So on the, the allocation that we received from the state, or that the state notified us that we were gonna receive that says ARP ESER 3, it says that Norfolk Public, Norfolk City Public Schools was to receive $113 million, dot, 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 in ESER 3 funds. And I'd like to get clarity then, what is the allocation that we're receiving in ESER 4 funds? Because again, the survey that's out that says ESER 3 and the CIP draft says ESER 3, and when I ask questions of cooperative strategies, they said ESER 3. So I just want to say I'm confused around the, the ESER 3 part and the, and the ESER 4, so if we can get clarity around that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, and I'm happy to provide clarification now. I, I think, and this goes back to us needing to have common language, but as it relates to the American Rescue Plan funding, I think our academic department refers to it as 3, and our budget department refers to it as 4. So it, it could become a little confusing, but it's all related to that $113 million plan. So if we need to put this in writing to the board, Dr. Martin, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
So then as part of that clarity, then, what we voted on earlier in terms of the $113 million and allocating funds from that, that is from the ARP ESER 3 that whatever department was just said is referring to, that's from the allocation, correct?
There are two. I think there was one from, from 3 and one from 4.
Yes, but I'm saying in terms of 3.
As the budget call, the office calls it.
Right, but in terms of the document that we have and the survey that we have out to the public that says ESER 3...
The American Rescue Plan funds.
Yes, the $113 million has been allocated to Norfolk Public Schools. Okay, thank you. I wanted to also bring to the board's attention, we received our HR reports that deals with the classroom teacher vacancies, and part of what we have discussed, both in ed planning and I think also during our retreat and just for a very long time, we have these pathways. So I'd like for the board and for the leadership team to consider bringing, having the board have some type of discussion around our goals and priorities to support our hard-to-staff schools. We have some schools, so I'll just use one pathway that I'm looking at right now. So based upon the report right now, J Cox Elementary has 13 vacancies, and grades 3, 4, and 5 each have 3. So J Cox Elementary students, some of them may funnel into Rough and the Middle that has 4 vacancies, and then on their pathway, they may funnel into Booker T. Washington that has 13 vacancies. Similarly, if you look at Lake Taylor High School, that has 21 vacancies, one of their feeder schools, South Side STEM Academy, has 13 vacancies. So I think it is important that, that we give some close attention to our, our feeder schools, these pathways, these vacancies, and again, going back even with the ESER funds, there may be ways that we can support the student learning in the classroom and going back to some of the goals and, and guardrails that we discussed. The other thing I wanted to mention, really more so just as a, as an up... The other thing I wanted to mention, really more so just as an update, maybe as part of a report, I just want to kind of share with the board, I'm going to be at the, there's an NSBA Southern Region Conference in August. I'll be there as part of my role as immediate past president of VSBA, so I just wanted to share that. I've also worked with Virginia Commonwealth University on a recommendation to the National Coalition on School Diversity about some ways of how to foster integration in the Commonwealth of Virginia, still co-chairing the VSBA Task Force on Schools in Challenging Environments, and we'll have a 3.0 report coming out soon, at least going before the Board of Directors of VSBA. I've been serving on Dr. James Lane's African-American Student Advisory Council, not student, African-American Superintendent Advisory Council, and part of what we're discussing is the ESER funds, diversity, and the pandemic impact on students, in particular, students of color throughout the Commonwealth. And then there's a, National School Board Association is doing some interviewing. I participated in an interview. Norfolk City came up in that. Norfolk, you all may recall, back in 2013, was involved with the lawsuit that pushed back against state takeover of schools. So, that was discussed, and I wanted to make sure I disclosed that. And also, I have given a declaration as part of the St. Paul's lawsuit that's happening in our city, so I wanted to make sure that no one was blindsided by that as well. So, wanted to share those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Over the past several weeks, starting with the July 4th weekend, our community has seen a significant amount of tragedy. We've had a number of our students killed by gun violence, and not only as a board member, but as a provider in the emergency department, I have witnessed it firsthand, how destructive it can be for families. The loss is so incredibly great. As a school division, I have seen that this pandemic has mounted more and more responsibility on us to make sure that children are nourished, to make sure that they are taught, to make sure that they are safe, to make sure that they are emotionally cared for, and if they're not, we should recognize that. There's so much more being put on the school system, on the public school system. I accept that. These are the times that we are in right now, and our children are our most precious commodity. I would like for our community to know that this gun violence has not escaped us, it's not a blurb for us. We see how serious it is, we see how it impacts not only the children and the families, but their friends and their teachers, and it truly is a loss to see a young one die unnecessary. And other children should not see that as their future. And so, I just would like to say that my sympathies go out to all the family members and to those who have suffered as a result of this, and I believe that all of us have our hearts in the right place, and I know that we're going to continue to have conversations on everything that we can do to have a sound public school system so we can support children in all the ways that we possibly can so that they can hopefully escape some of these issues that plague their communities. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments to share? All right, with that, I adjourn this meeting. Please be safe driving home.